We're rolling.
Uh huh.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May 17, 2017. It is 4:30 in the afternoon, and I invite you all to please stand if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance before we begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, to begin our council meeting, may I please have a roll call? Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hen. Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comments. At this time, are there any public comments that need to be shared? Okay, then we will move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, moving down to the SCAT applicants, and Frank, I can give this to you later if you need, we have Jayden Minema and Daniel Wiersma. As for under letter I, the consider to approve a mayor's appointment, that would be Dwayne C. Housen to the Board of Adjustments. Other than that, oh, and under letter K, consider the time change for our meetings in June, July, and August. I would like to continue what we've done in the past, whereas the first Wednesday of the month, our meeting is held at noon. The second meeting of the month would be held at 4:30. Any questions, comments? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Last request for questions, comments? May I have a roll call, please? Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, we will now open the public hearing, and this is in regards to the Prairie Trail addition. The public hearing is now open. Are there any comments regarding the Prairie Trail addition? And if there are not, have any been received in writing? No. Thank you. Then do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. A roll call to close the public hearing? Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Now that the public hearing is closed, we'll go into the consideration to approve the final plat, but I think first, Mr. Beckett, are you, or, I'm sorry, who's going to explain? Is anyone going over this, Sean? You're going to go over this. My apologies, Pat.
Mayor, can I clarify that public hearing, there's actually two things going on, is the plat and the vacation of the easement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So to clarify, that public hearing was for the plat and the easement vacation. And Pat, I'm not feeling the greatest. Sean said he's going to talk first, and then maybe you, okay? So everyone, if you could just bear with me, and if I duck out, it's because I don't feel well, all right? Okay, let's move on.
Okay. So the current plat, as you see, is numbered, or letter A. If you turn to the second page, you'll actually get a good feel for what we're looking at re-plating, and you'll see where the area is adjacent to Taco John's, Farm Credit Service, and so forth. So you currently have three lots, two arterial commercial, and one multifamily residential, with the lots and associated zoning running kind of east or west. And that places a commercial lots next to residential lots. The, the, the final plat for Prairie Trail addition will combine the lots into two, essentially two blocks, with the lot lines and associated zoning running north-south, with the multifamily acting as a buffer from the arterial commercial zone area. We wanted to make sure that there was a buffer between any commercial and residential properties. And again, we wanted to put this, this map together, so you're easy to pick out and own landmarks and kind of orientate yourself with that. So with that, you have the preliminary and the final plats before you, as well as several easements that need to be vacated in order to develop the lots as presented in the new plat. Pat, could you go into the easements?
Sure. I believe they're shown on the final plat and the preliminary plat. The final plat shows an additional easement that needs to be vacated that isn't shown on the final plat. During preparation of the final plat, I noticed that we had missed that one. But there, there's two easements, basically, that require vacation. The first one is between lots one and two of Sheldon, of block five of Sheldon Crossing plat two, and the second one is along the south boundary line of lot 13 of the original Sheldon Crossing plat one. Those need to be vacated because they would cross across at an angle of the lot configuration as shown on Prairie Trail addition plat. There is no utilities currently within those easements, so there shouldn't be any issues with that.
All right. Thank you. So, for item A, consider the approval of the final plat is the first item that we would need to take action on. Do you have any questions for Sean or for Pat? If not, do we have a motion then to approve the final plat regarding Prairie Trail addition?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Last request for comments? A roll call, please. Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Then the next part is consideration, approval of the vacation of the utility easements. Do you have any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Yep. And if there are no comments or questions, save, roll call, please. Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Then the next part is consideration, approval of the vacation of the utility easements. Do you have any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Yep. And if there are no comments or questions, save, roll call, please. Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Then before we go through a motion of considering amending the zoning code, Sean is going to share a little bit of that preparation with you, too, please.
Okay. Reviewing section 23.3 of the zoning regulations ordinance, it mentions that zoning permits are required. When you look at section 2.1.118, under the definition of structures, fencing is currently excluded as a definition. So we simply want to amend the text to read as follows, "Anything constructed or erected which requires location on the ground or attached to something having location on the ground, including, but not limited to, fences, signs, and billboards." If, if the, if there is a consensus to have that amended, it'll go through the proper ordinance revisions and the three readings. But I wanted to receive direction from the, from the council on, on that during a public hearing to make sure that we're complying with the zoning code requirements.
Comments or questions?
And so, that change you're proposing is not just for this plat, is that correct?
No, no, this is, this is separate from, from the plat. This is just an oversight that was in the zoning code.
Okay.
It's intended to make practice and policy consistent.
Correct. Meaning?
Meaning that the interpretation and application of the code in the past has been to require a permit for fence as a structure, and this will clarify that that is, in fact, what our zoning code requires.
Great. Comments, questions?
So, I guess, if I'm looking at this, and I want to stick a billboard up, it doesn't count as a structure.
There's a separate set of regulations covering billboards and signs.
Okay.
Okay. So it reads now, "Anything constructed or erected which requires location on the ground or attached to something having location on the ground, including signs and billboards, but not including fences or walls, use as fences." But we want it to include fences and walls.
We wish to include, yes, we want it to include fences. It's, it's not limiting it, but it does now include fencing, signs, and billboards.
So what's the implication?
Right now, a person would not have to take a permit out to construct a fence. They could pay a contractor $2,500 to install a fence. Somebody from the city could drive down the street and say, "That's a nice $2,500 fence. You need to take it down and move it because you didn't put it up correctly." I didn't know I had to take a permit out. Well, right now, there's no way to compel them to take a permit out. So essentially, it's to safeguard a person's investment in a fence, so they know that they're putting it in properly, that, that meets current code. So there are sections in the zoning code that specifically refer to fences and the placement of, but there's no requirement for them to take a permit out. So it's an after the fact at this point.
But we've been requiring people to take them out. We've been asking people to take them out, so this just clears up some uncertainty in the code.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you. Any further comments, questions, clarifications? If not, then do we have a motion to approve the consideration to amend the zoning code to eliminate where it says not including fences, but to include fences?
I'm still a little bit confused by what you said earlier about billboards. You could, you said, say what you said about billboards again. Pete.
Well, now they're all, I don't know how that got changed, okay, but now they are, they always were included. They always were included, so.
Yes. So what you said didn't apply here.
Correct.
Okay. I am understanding the code correctly. I thought I was reading it backwards the way you said it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're good.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion then to approve amending the zoning code?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate what our city manager said, this will still have to go through the regular readings, so if you have second or third thoughts on it, you'll have an opportunity to voice them.
Time to do it, then. Absolutely. All right, then may I, thank you for that, Micah. Any other, anything else? Okay, then may I have a roll call, please? Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Thank you. And number four in our new business, self-insurance presentation. Tom is here from Perspective Insurance, and I thought it would just be nice, Tom, if you could just walk us through what our plan is, so that as we're doing what we need to do, we have a better understanding and grasp on what our insurance program is. So thank you for coming up and offering to take a few minutes out of your day.
You bet. First off, thank you for your business. We appreciate it. So, did you all get this handout? Okay.
Yes.
What I did was put together just a one-page little presentation here. You have a self-funded health insurance plan and have had it for, to the best of my knowledge, over 25 years, so. But in order to talk about self-funding, let's talk about fully insured health insurance first, just for a second. So if you have a fully insured health insurance plan, whether it's a group health insurance plan or an individual health insurance plan, you send your money to the insurance company, they pay the claims. If you don't have any claims, they keep the money, is that right? They don't send it back, or they don't send you a thank you note and say, "We appreciate your business." With self-funded health insurance, what the attempt is, is to buy health insurance at a fixed cost and then add the claims to it. So with that, we're going to talk about self-funding. So if you look at the sheet that I gave you, the renewal date for the health insurance is July 1st, and we've been in visits with Sean numerous times about the renewal. The plan administrator is Maritain Health. So you don't have a health insurance company, you have a plan administrator. The plan administrator pays the claims, takes care of the legalities of the plan, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. And Maritain Health has been the TPA through at least three sales of that company. The original company was Iowa Benefits when the first self-funded plan started. So self-funding, the individual stop loss is $25,000. So that means that the city is paying all health insurance claims up to $25,000 for every life on the group, so employee, spouse, children, $25,000.
Each?
Each, $25,000. So you'd say, well, that's a lot of people that we're at risk for with $25,000, and that is true. So the next item is aggregate stop loss. That's like a lid on everything. Aggregate just says if we have all these specific stop losses, these $25,000s, we have to have a lid on that somehow or other, and that's what that aggregate stop loss is. So it guarantees that the cost isn't going to go over a certain amount.
What is the aggregate stop loss?
Well, it's figured by considering maximum cost, and maximum cost is down in the middle of the page, where it says $897,000.
And is that, okay, then after that, it's reinsured somehow, or?
Correct. So there's reinsurance above the $25,000, and then there's reinsurance on top of all of that.
How far does that reinsurance go?
Forever.
Really?
Yeah. So that's, so the city has a stop loss on the specific side and on the aggregate side.
Who underwrites that?
The reinsurer is HCC, a company by the name of HCC.
Okay.
This is a little bit foreign. It's not like it's Wellmark, it's not like it's, it's a traditional health insurance arrangement. So self-funding is, is maybe a little bit of a new concept here. There's currently five singles and 23 families on the group. The estimated fixed cost, you can see there, is $214,000. So that fixed cost includes all of those items listed, claims administration, reinsurance premiums, PPO access fees, it's Midland's Choices, that is the PPO, utilization review, Cobra administration, disease management, and broker compensation is all in that $214,000. So the total expected cost is an actuaries' number that says, based on the size of group and the age and the makeup of the group, the most, we would expect that you wouldn't spend over $681,000 on premium. So if you go back up to that $214,000, if you didn't have any claims, which is impossible, if you didn't have any claims during the year, that's what your insurance would cost, $214,000, because that's what it costs to run the plan. So if we go down, Pete, to the maximum cost, $897,000, that's the worst possible case scenario. Well, the city of Sheldon has never come close. You think about that, how many specific stop loss claims do you even have in a year? A group this size would expect to have maybe two or three that even exceed $25,000. So, you know, we're not talking about 25, 30 specific stop loss claims. So if you look in the middle, I wanted to make a little bit of a note to show you where it stands today for this current year. So from July 1st of 16 to 4/12 of 17, when this was calculated, the claims cost thus far was $188,000. The fixed cost for that part of the year is about $162,000. The annual estimate is less than $500,000. That would be fixed cost and claims and everything. Okay? So the city collects money, charges the premium, because it's a self-funded plan, you decide how much you're going to charge in premium. It's not the insurance company telling you that this is how much you have to charge for the premium. But I'll compliment the city on one thing, they've always taken good care of that health insurance plan, they've always funded it adequately, so the claims reserve account has always been adequately funded, so that there's money there to pay the claims. So let's talk about that in just a second. What happens if you have a claim? On a fully insured plan, let's say it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, you send the claim to Blue Cross, they pay the claim, right? Pay the provider. When someone working for the city of Sheldon has a claim, the claim is submitted to the third-party administrator. The third-party administrator adjudicates the claim by checking with Midland's Choices to price it, to price that claim. And once a week, right, Angie?
Yes.
Once a week, they send a request for money. The third-party, third-party administrator doesn't have money to pay the claim until you give them the money. So then that, the administrator pays the claim for you. So that's the way that claims process works. Any questions on that? I know that's a little bit different than what you're maybe accustomed to hearing.
So far, so good.
Okay. So, you have a grandfathered health insurance plan, and Sean, I told you I was going to check to see how far back I could look. I could only go back to 1996. But the, the plan that you currently have, the benefit schedule that you currently have is at least back to 1996. I don't know how much further back it goes, because I couldn't find out. So 1996. So if you look at the bottom of the page, the benefits that are offered to the employees, each person has a 250 deductible, the family has 500, the co-insurance is 80/20, as long you stay in Midland's Choices network. The out-of-network co-insurance, if you happen to leave that network, is 70/30. Out-of-pocket maximums are 750 for an individual and 1,500 for a family. Prescription drugs just apply to your deductible, and you're out-of-pocket. It's paid at 80/20. Until you hit your out-of-pocket maximum, then it's 100%. In the emergency room, the same thing, deductible, and then 80/20. Once you hit your out-of-pocket maximum, then it's paid at 100%. So it's a, it's actually a tremendous health insurance plan. It's benefit-rich. I'm sure the employees have enjoyed having that. So that's the way the health insurance plan has operated for quite a few years. We have talked in past years and more recently about maybe offering a higher deductible. So every year, I get a fully insured quote from, usually it's Wellmark, just to see if the rates that the city is charging the employees would be comparable to what a fully insured plan, similar plan would be. That's kind of a good benchmark to see whether the city's charging adequate premiums, and they have. We've talked about higher deductibles, or maybe offering a second plan alongside this plan, so give employees a choice, the current plan and maybe a higher deductible option. We've explored that idea. Since it's a self-funded plan, the city can do whatever they want with the benefit itself, raise the deductible, offer a second plan, and that's open for discussion. It's, this.
But by increasing the, by going with a high deductible plan, we would lose our grandfather status.
If you didn't have a second plan, okay, let's, if you just changed the plan that you have to a higher deductible, yes, you'd lose your grandfathered status. If you offer a second plan, some higher deductible, and give employees a choice, higher-low deductible, the second plan would be an Affordable Care Act compliant plan. This plan here would continue being a grandfathered plan, so. The people in Washington don't seem to be making quick decisions on healthcare reform, so I don't know what's happening there. The House passed a bill, the Senate seems to think that they're going to change it, so I can't tell you that going forward, what's going to happen to the Affordable Care Act. My guess would be that it will be changed eventually. I don't know that it's going to go away. But currently, the, the plan that you have is a grandfathered health insurance plan. And maybe you could say extremely grandfathered, since it's been the same for 20 years, so. But I'm here to answer questions, if you have questions about either the current plan or maybe looking down the road a year or two, what we would think.
I think, I'm okay. I would, I personally wanted just an explanation, how does it work within our city? And to me, this is a great tool, just to have the visual and the explanation come from you to have a better understanding of it, so I appreciate that. But council, do you have any questions regarding how our self-funded insurance program works? Greg?
So I'm hearing you right, this is an excellent health insurance plan as it stands.
Yes, it's probably as benefit-rich as you'll see.
And so you're not here saying, well, you can do this and for less money and maintain that same level of service or benefits, there's not a better option available that you have in your toolbag?
No, I, I don't think there's a more benefit-rich plan that you could do. So since it's self-funded, the city owns this health insurance plan, it's your health insurance plan, so it's not a templated plan that came from some fully insured. You can do whatever you want, you can change the deductible to whatever you think is appropriate. You can offer a health savings account, you can mold it the way you want.
When you say that you have checked this against buying it privately, so we, we could duplicate this privately?
No. No, the standard market in the fully insured arena does not offer as benefit-rich plan as you have. It would have to have a higher out-of-pocket, higher deductible. Then going back to where we kind of started this conversation, with a fully insured plan, if you don't have claims, the money does not come back to you. The self-funded area, the city has, the profit stays in the city. So the claims reserve account is the city's money, that's not the insurance company's money. So the, the claims are paid out of that reserve account, that's the city's money, so.
And so far, that's been adequate?
It's been very adequate.
Okay.
In fact, yes, it's, it's been more than adequate, so. And of course, it's important to keep that healthy, that account healthy, because if it's not, when they make a call for money to pay claims, the money's got to be there, so it's very important. I made this offer to Sean, since it's self-funded and maybe it's a bit of a foreign subject, anytime any of you have questions, feel free to ask. I mean, we're, our door is open, and I'd be glad to discuss it with you, so.
What I'm hearing is, it's not broke. We, I mean, it's, we've got a good plan, don't mess, in my thought, don't mess with it.
You have a very good health insurance plan that's financially very sound. Whether this, whether the city would ever want to entertain raising deductibles or offering maybe a second option or a health savings account, that's open for discussion.
And for what reason would we do that, other than saving money on our end?
Well, that might be one motivating factor. The other one might be, if you're familiar with health savings accounts, for example, it might be advantageous to, to employees that don't have a lot of claims, that maybe they could use that health savings account as a way to save money for themselves.
Is this just medical?
This is just medical, yeah.
Because my experience within HSA is, then you've got dental and eye care as well, that with an HSA account, you can cover some of that that way.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the, the health insurance itself wouldn't cover that, but you can take it out of there.
Right, your HSA account would, I mean, it's, and again, for those small claims, where you don't have a lot of claims, it's worked well in picking up some of the stuff there, but.
And I think down the road, if that's an option that you want to explore, I think that's a whole educational process. You know, people that maybe haven't had a health savings account in the past, it would be something that I would encourage you, that if you're, if you're thinking that way, start early, educate employees on how it works, maybe do some one-on-one counseling with people. I think that's not something you just want to make a snap decision, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Anybody else, questions or comments? Again, we can reach out to you at any time.
Absolutely.
Have a conversation if, if needed, or we just want to make sure we're good and move on, or any other questions?
Okay.
Yeah? I just see things turning there, Greg.
They are turning, I don't really, I got to think about this more.
Sure, absolutely, yep. Mainly, I just, it's, when we sit up here and try to get a grasp of our self-insurance and way it all works, we can all bob our head, but I think it's better, you know, to have you come up and explain it to us, and that way if questions do arise, we can propose those to you and, and begin that process of understanding it better, so.
Anytime.
Yep. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, then moving into new business, number four in the, oh, we just finished that, hello. Number five, consider amending the future Number five, consider amending the future land use map. This is due in part to the change, the addition to the Prairie Trails addition. So we need to update our future land use map.
Correct. The zoning itself is not changing. The replat of the area is changing the size of the lots. But what we want to do is, based on the new action that was just approved by the council, is to make sure that we are updating our future land use map so that it's congruent with any changes that we're making now.
So it's the replat only, not zoning?
This is zoning only at this point.
Well, I thought you just said replat.
We did. We approved the plat. But now, we want to make sure that we're carrying the zoning forward, so it's matching the plat that was just approved.
Okay, thank you.
So what's changing from the current to the proposed? I mean, it's so small, the print on here is so small, I can't read what it says.
So your residential multifamily is now abutting the single-family residential in the... Based on the new plat, so the future land use map is going to show that.
You see that over there, John?
This area right here. So this is now commercial.
Frank, do you have a copy of that, too? Are you understanding it?
The other residential.
I appreciate your honesty.
Okay, I see the difference now, there's just...
Is yours colored or black and white?
It's such a small area.
You're welcome to have my color copy, Frank. You have that there? Okay, that's what we're on now. That second page shows... Yeah? Okay. So it's this area here is what we're changing here.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, does everybody follow that now? And Frank afterwards? If you... Okay. Just come on up here afterwards if you need clarification. Okay, then, do we have a motion to approve the consideration to amend the future land use map?
So move support.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? A roll call, please. Hamel?
Hi.
Hans?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Eels?
Hi.
Bunker?
Hi.
Thank you very much. We have a mess going on up here. Okay. Next on our agenda is number six, discussion on our solid waste collection contracts. Sean had provided some information to us regarding different scenarios with our two garbage haulers, solid waste haulers. Just want to be politically correct or whichever. Before you, our two different scenarios. One is a 75 cent increase with 25 cents a year to follow. The second is a 50 cent increase with a 25 cent per year to follow. And to make some clarifications after visiting with Buck, just very, very briefly, you know, our current rate stands at $14.15. We have a $1.50 billing fee. And then we have our fuel surcharge that we determine at the 15th of each month. So the first discussion I'd like to have with you all is regarding the rates. Then the second part of the discussion is regarding the fuel surcharge possibility change, possible change. Do you have any questions or comments before we start? Does anybody want to share on behalf of DeCrye or Schwartz? Okay, thank you. You're always welcome to chime in in the midst of this conversation. Let's see here. Our contract is up as of August 1st, 2017. Also, so not a customer fee, a billing fee, but there is another request that has come through that they would like for us to consider, and that is, on our ordinance, it reads quite lengthy about the container specifications. And Schwartz Sanitary Service did request that instead of having all the mumble jumble about not to exceed so many pounds or one 5-gallon of this and so much of that, just make it either the one 5-gallon automated bucket pickup or two containers, not the rest of all of that jargon that's underneath. Am I correct with that, Jeff, in stating that's how you would prefer it to read in that regard?
32-gallon cans or just the 160?
Or the one, not all the other...
We got to charge if they have extra.
Et cetera, okay.
Just mainly post it, this is what you're paying for, this is what you get.
And that's it? Okay, thank you. So with that said, discussion comments anywhere that we're at? I open it up to the council to see where you're at before any action is taken or... If you compare, Sean also provided us information regarding surrounding cities and what theirs are. And I appreciate that. And if you notice on that...
I guess, can I see what was...
spreadsheet.
Looking at being waived? So did that have to do with any items that were set out over and above the two containers? What would be done with those items? Is that something they would come to the city and... Or is that something that they would still go to the haulers?
Or selling stickers to put on like bags or something, and that didn't work.
Okay.
So they're leaving.
So it would not be left? It would still be picked up? I guess.
They wanted to have it, because I'd like to see it get left.
Well, that's why I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of what we're talking about, so...
They would learn to recycle and be able to put it in the two tanks. Right now, we pick up everything and anything.
Right. We also have... Let me see if I'm reading this correctly. Okay.
The larger communities around the area will do it.
And in our section 105 of our solid waste control, on our 105.03, our sanitary disposal required. It's the duty of each owner to provide for the sanitary disposal of all refuse accumulating on the owner's premises before it becomes a nuisance. Any such accumulation remaining on any premises for a period of more than 30 days shall be deemed a nuisance, and the city may proceed to abate such nuisances in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 50 or by initiating proper action in the district court. Right now, we have that problem. There's an organ sitting on Sixth Street, and it's been there since...
A year.
Thank you. To where the weeds are growing around it. And you're not going to pick it up because it's not part of regular garbage. And I don't know whose route that one is. Okay. And I don't, you know... Yes, people aren't coming to you to say, I have something extra. And I don't know if that's how that works now, Mark or Buck or Jeff. If I have something extra to throw away that's beyond my two containers or my 65-gallon, they should be calling, and then there's an extra charge, correct? It's not happening. Okay. And you guys are just picking up anything and everything except for maybe items such as an organ, a piano organ, people. TVs, exactly. They had one sit across my house for three months until we had a good snow and the plow took it, so... Sorry, Bob, he wasn't very happy about that one, but... So that's why we need to be specific on the containers and be more following through with what our nuisance is. If it's left behind after so long, they're going to be served a nuisance. That's where this is coming from. Okay, so...
Then we need to enforce it.
Exactly.
Like that organ, someone's shame on us.
One... So one thing that can be done is make it a requirement of the solid waste. If you don't take it, you take it. And then you make... Or you send that list into the city, and then the city hires somebody else. And through a fee system, if it's left out on the terrace after 24 hours and it was duly noted as a violation of some sort, then you take a picture of it, you find the person, and you pick it up and you dispose of it. If they don't pay it, then you assess it under the property taxes. But that fee should be large enough that it fully covers all the cost, punitive enough that you're not sending people out to pick up things that they ought to be taking care of themselves. And then maybe that will be enough to fund more of a strict nuisance program. So there are things that you can do that most communities do to deal with this. There's going to be fees involved, but that'll clean up the city rather quickly. You'll have pushback, but it'll clean up the city quickly.
Brad, what were you saying there? That we just need to follow through the nuisance?
That organ, that's really...
Right, shame on us.
Yeah.
Yep, and to be honest, I forget about it. I drive by it, and then I forget about it. That's why I send texts on a Saturday morning at whatever, or Friday night to Todd, when I remember things. But yeah, and that's where we need to clean that up, so that way you can stick to what you are to pick up or not pick up, and then how do we handle the backside of that? That's something that we can look into. We don't have to... Obviously, can't decide for sure upon tonight how we're going to do that, but it's something we need to change, rectify, improve. Okay, so solid waste collection expressed concerns with the increased tipping fees of 8.19% in 2015-16 and 3% in 2016-17. And if I'm correct, there's no tipping increase this year for 17-18? Okay. The contractors are requesting increase to cover the recent landfill increases as well as the annual cost of living. The solid waste recycling fee increase would be effective as of August 1st, 2017. These rates would then increase annually by 25 cents effective dates of August 1st for the next four years.
It'd be increasing 25 cents annually.
Sorry, I'm just reading this memo, so that should say annually, not a month. Thank you. With the effective dates of the 1st of August for the next four years, if the contractor's proposal, proposed rate schedule is approved, we recommend that the fuel surcharge formula be looked at.
Go ahead. Clarification.
Mm-hmm.
It's 75 cents per month or year?
This would be...
Rate increase.
This would be 75 cents.
A month?
The first... No, you're increasing it 75 cents.
For the 12 months.
So each... No, per month.
That's what I meant.
It's a 75 cent bump.
75 cent raised.
And then 25 cents every August for the next four years.
Yes. So you're not... It's 75 cents per month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I heard it as per year.
Do you have comments?
The 75 cents would be nine bucks for the first year.
What was happening with the fuel surcharge again?
Fuel surcharge, right now, it's at, if anything is above $2.50, I think Pat calls and checks that?
Yes.
On the 15th of the month, and then if there is, if it is above that, then we have our fuel surcharge kick in, which is... Thank you.
What was the amount you said?
50 cents.
No, the fuel price.
Oh, $2.50. Diesel, correct? Diesel, thank you. And the diesel rates, Sean provided a spreadsheet on what like the Midwest average has been for the past, this week, last week, week before, a year ago, et cetera, just to give a fair comparison of how those rates have been the past year. And right now...
Am I misunderstanding that, that there was talk about seeing that rate, the fuel surcharge rate? Or is that maintaining the same?
Well, that's up to us. Sean had put it in here as suggested to change it to $3.99 or possibly $3.49 in the memo that was sent out to all of us. Right now, is there a problem with where it's at now, or is there a reason that we need to bring that up now? Just fill me in if I'm...
Well, you're going to quite likely be paying that surcharge on a regular basis going forward. For probably three years, you were paying a surcharge until fuel prices dropped roughly 18 to 20 months ago. But you're going to be... You're bumping that limit right now. So again, that surcharge is going to kick in, and it'll probably be with us with fuel going up. So it's pretty common to see that set at $4 and up before it kicks in. It's just at a relatively low threshold at this point. So just wanted to put that out there.
And is that common for...
I think the reason we did that, it was because we didn't want to raise the rates, so we went to a fuel surcharge instead.
Exactly. And I do think that works, checking the 15th of each month, and if it's there, then we need to, you know, include that in the bill.
That's the original why we had to approve the surcharge.
Yep.
We didn't want to raise rates.
Yep. Okay, so... Is there any other discussion? Does anybody have any feedback they want to share? We have two scenarios on the table. A request of 75 cent increase with a 25 cent per year after. We also have before us a 50 cent increase with a 25 cent per year after that scenario.
Are we going to act on now, or...
We can.
Is that what we have to do?
Well, this was...
What's your direction?
My direction, this was on our agenda two weeks ago, and I postponed it because I wanted to reach out with Buck and Jeff and have a little discussion with them, which I never did get around to. But I was able to visit just briefly about the ordinance, the possible change in the ordinance that Jeff had brought up, the billing fee instead of a customer fee, but also Buck welcomed the opportunity to speak with all the council prior, because sometimes a conversation one-on-one or on a telephone is a little more comfortable than coming up to the podium. And just to see where everybody stood to give us a chance to review and see where we're all at.
Question. Sean, the rates in the other communities that you gave us, are those customer rates or...
When I had asked the question, it was what the haulers were charging.
Okay.
So if they...
So it's the hauler's rate, not the customer's rate?
So if they added on something else, that's not included here. I had asked just for the hauler's rates.
Okay.
The only one automation, one person.
Yep. What Buck said is they're all automation except for one. Automation means the garbage truck pulls up, the arm comes out, grabs the container, dumps it in the truck, places it back. Right now, you both have crews, two-man crews going out on your trucks. So we are manual, we are not automated.
So we're like Sam Bourne-Hartley in...
We're semi.
We have hookups to where we can develop a big...
Correct.
Thank you, Randy. We can.
But we cannot do it. We can do it a little bit, but it'd take you forever.
Yeah.
Where we had one truck, we could just take it and nobody would...
And do both of you have the capability to pick up that 65-gallon, the arm, the automated? Thank you. So we're just looking at the... Our contract is going to end soon. We have a proposal, they would... The haulers would like 75 cents and then 25 cents the following four years. We also have a 50 cents recommendation from Sean with a 25 cent based on past history, I believe, if you want to provide your comments.
So essentially, it was looking at, there's a substantial tipping fee increase of a little... I think it was 19, roughly 19% a number of years ago. And the city at that point in time met with the haulers and gave them a 25 cent increase. You've had, since that large increase from 2015 to the present time, you've had a couple of tipping fee increases totaling 11.2%. So I thought that giving them an additional 25 cent or giving them 50 cents would... So I thought that giving them an additional 25 cent, or giving them 50 cents would help to offset that, the tipping fees plus an additional 25 cents. So that's where I came in at, based on the tipping fees and what has been done in the past. And then when you look at what other haulers are paying in other communities, those that are subject to the same tipping fees, you get, you're trying to get more of an apples-to-apples comparison. It's a business decision on whether or not you want to go automated or stay manual.
The landfill, from 2013-14 was at 25.50, 14-15, we went to $30.50, 15 to 16, we went to $33 a ton, 16 to 17, we're at 34, and this new year, 17 to 18, will be at 34 per ton to dump.
Thank you, Brad.
So this year...
And that is the tipping fee we're talking about?
That is the tipping fee.
What's that, Jeff?
The biggest tipping increase when the landfill went up $10.
We only went up $5.
In effect, as we started, the landfill is doubled. 15 years, the landfill is doubled.
But so do costs of operating a business.
What about, hold on. In 2014-15, it went up five bucks, and what are we saying? How much did we go up?
It was about an 18 and a half percent increase, and it went up a quarter.
So it went up five bucks, but that was a 12, that was a $4 increase then, correct?
But the reason it went up is we put everybody across the board at the landfill paying the same rate. That was one of the big reasons it went up that year.
Before they used all the tanks, I really used my career.
Yeah.
They all got paid to bring it here.
They all got paid to bring it here? I'm sorry.
They were on a sliding scale. The farther you were away, the less your tipping fee was. That's not so more anymore.
Okay, and Buck, what was that that you said? I'm sorry, can you say it one more time? Because we really should have...
Same thing.
Oh, you said that, okay. Because we need to have it recorded. Okay.
Is there a reason not to go automated? Make it mandatory?
Or if we could get everybody, show them the can, one of the blue cans, if you could.
Would you be, that be your preference? I mean, to me, that seems to be the simplest way to...
Right. And Mark, what, you're saying it would be the simplest? Mark, what is your comment on that? If we were to go fully automated?
I'm for that, if you do that.
If we were to do that? You're for it also?
Yeah.
I mean, initially, there would be the cost of the can to the consumer, but beyond that, then...
The cost of us to get a truck.
Yeah, they're going to have to move trucks.
How many people around the community already have the can?
Now, how many of your route now, how many are automated? Would have the capability, would have that larger container that would automate?
I suppose I got probably 25, 30% of my customers have already bought the can on their own.
So Schwartz is 25 to 30%, and Gertler, about the same.
A little bit less, but he started a little bit there.
Sure, sure.
The can is what, maybe 70 bucks?
70 dollars. We talked about this in the past, about trying to find a way if there might be a grant out there to help us with having that a citywide thing is, instead of reflecting that cost on that.
People that got them, no, what are you going to do?
Pardon me, Buck?
You're going to have to figure out who's got them and who doesn't.
Figure out who's got them and who doesn't, right, right.
And one of the ways you could do that is establish a rate, since you've got two different haulers, if it's 60 dollars or whatever that is, and then during the billing process, those that actually have the cans would essentially receive that credit of 60 dollars. Those that don't have the cans would be charged that in their utility bills. So then you're equaling the playing field, so somebody isn't paying something additionally. So that's one way you can do it. You're going to clean up your neighborhoods because the cans are, you don't have the tipping or the wet weight. That's one of the reasons why going automated makes sense, because you're paying a premium whenever it rains and you have uncovered refuse. So all of those things need to be figured out in your business plan. You work with all the private haulers, find out when they're bringing cans in, so you share the transportation costs. It's done all over. It's quite easy, and one person can make 800 stops a day. So one person could pick up all your recycling, if that's automated, and all your solid waste in four days. My question is, you schedule it so you don't have it on a holiday, so then you're not paying your overtime as well? It's very, very easy.
I have a question. Who's going to front the money for the cans?
Right. There's a lot, there's a lot to go into that. That's what we talked about before.
Couldn't you build that into your garbage bill?
Yeah, but who's going to front them up front? Who's going to pay if it's $10,000 or $20,000 for all these cans? Who's going to bankroll that? The city? Do we have to do that for private?
Can we? It might be worth it in the long run.
But do we have to do that?
Do we have to? No, but should we?
Do we have to do that for private enterprise?
That's where you lose, if you're a private enterprise, why do we have to come up here and ask for a raise? But we're private, we should be able to say we're going to...
Because I think we have, it's...
But now we're all of a sudden...
Correct, that we have to...
I'm not, do we have a choice? I don't think we have a choice.
We have to have curbside, we have to have curbside garbage.
I don't know that we have a choice.
I have to ask, are you, gentlemen, council, ready to make a decision on the contract today?
No.
If we are not, we need to sit down with both of you, myself included, the city manager and a council representative or two, so we can have this discussion at a roundtable, so that when we come here, we can take action. We have some time. Are you, are you ready to make any decisions today?
No.
I think we need to look at that automated thing and come to it.
It might be worth an avenue to explore.
I think we'll look at some things before making a decision.
We've been talking about it for years. It kind of come a point where we're just going to have to do it. It just makes sense.
Yeah, is it something that can be done by August 1st? I don't know, probably not, maybe so, but it's something that in the meantime, we need to figure out what we're going to do before then too, so...
Why not just go after a one-year contract with what they want, and then we have a year to...
Figure it out.
Figure out what we're going to do.
That's something we can do.
And typically, when you're looking at taking that large capital cost on, you're looking at potentially more than a five-year contract at that point. It might be maybe a seven-year contract. That's something to also consider.
That's probably not a bad idea, though, the one-year contract. Would you guys be fine with a one-year contract and then move in the direction of automation?
Yeah.
Now, give us plenty of time to...
Mark, would you, what do you think about, what are your thoughts?
If we just have a five-year contract now and decide what we're going to do, not grow the amount of cans or automated or whatever, but that's up to you guys.
Right.
Then we need to, we need to sit at the table and talk this through a little more than...
All right, I'm going to, we, Greg, would you be willing, or I don't want to put you on the spot, but two councilmen, Sean, myself, and both haulers, let's get together. You're going to be out of town for a little bit, right? We'll talk about that. Sorry, just announced that to everybody.
So one-year, with a one-year contract, to be off the table right now?
Are you not in favor of a one-year contract, Mark?
That's up to you guys. You do what you think.
Why do you have to be so easygoing?
I'm going to go on a limb, I'm going to make a motion, we give them 75 cents for a one-year contract, and relook at going fully automated within the next year.
There's a motion on the table, but I do have to ask.
Second that.
Thank you. Do you want to keep our fuel charge the way it is for this year then?
Well, let's take care of this motion first, maybe.
Okay, just wanted to...
I think then we can move forward, and we can talk about the cans.
Absolutely, figure out the automated...
Because it's going to take an investment on their part for...
And ours, yeah, absolutely.
Sit down and...
They can, they can better off figure out what they need to do, and they can bring ideas.
What?
I'm sorry, what are you saying?
We got some talking here, some talking there.
I know, I can't understand it. Hold on, no, you're, thank you, because I couldn't hear this either. Hold on one second. What, Randy? You were saying 75 cents, we can figure this year out.
Absolutely.
Right.
And that's, I thought you were already equipped to do the automation.
We are.
If the whole town goes to automated, you're going to need a different truck.
Then I'll probably, I'll probably get a truck with the arm in.
Yeah, it's, and it's not just about the trucks with the automated arm, it's also about getting everybody in Sheldon those cans without saying, here's your can, 70 dollars. It's, we have to figure out a game plan with that. So right now, I'm about to take a roll call. This is regarding a one-year contract of 75 cent increase. Any other comments?
That's keeping the fuel surcharge, or we're not addressing that?
We'll address that right after this one. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel.
Hi.
Funker.
Hi.
Yells.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Thank you. Now regarding the fuel surcharge, let's just keep this in consideration for the next year. Is that something we want to remain as is? Do we want to bump it up to $3, 3.49, 3.99? How, Ange, do you know off the top of your head how often, or Sean, anybody can shim in? I don't pay attention to my garbage bill that close, my water bill. How often are we increasing that?
Here lately, probably over the past five, six months, I think there's only maybe been one or two where we've actually had to charge a fuel charge.
It's been over 2.50, okay.
Yep.
As of April 17, fuel's 2.536, so we would have it then? It would come on the next bill, is that right?
As of what?
As of April 17 on this...
Is that what COOP was charging?
No, we go by...
Well, that's by the U.S. on-highway diesel fuel price report that we've had in our packet.
We call farmers COOP, and whatever their diesel price is on that day determines whether we charge or not.
So now that it's at another per 270 something, we won't get nothing unless it's still there at the beginning of the...
Correct.
Current price per gallon is 277? Did I hear you?
I thought you said it was 277.
It's on this report.
On this report, we get, there's an average here of the U.S. on-highway diesel fuel prices. It gives an average of what the Midwest cost is.
I think I think it's like 2.40, 2.33.
All right. So we, so right, so we haven't, we've only done it a couple of times in the past...
Probably five, six months.
Five, six months. So is that something you want to remain the same for the next year while we hammer out everything else, or do you want to change it?
Keep in mind, if it does go up, it was, it probably hung up there, we're paying a surcharge for three years straight, so...
There was one time we were at that max of 100 or $1.25 at one time, when the fuel was real bad.
Right, yeah. Okay. So recommendation, do you want to change that to fuel surcharge kicks in at $3 a gallon?
I say we should up it some.
For one year, as we're refiguring everything else out?
Yeah.
Is someone prepared to, further discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion?
Make the motion to up it to three. Support.
So that motion is that the fuel surcharge would kick in the 15th of the month if diesel is $3 or over?
Correct.
Any other comments?
Can I say that? Sorry.
This isn't reflected at three.
But are we going with, I just want to be clear, $3 or 2.99? I just want to be clear.
Three zero zero, three dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and again, we'll stick with the 50 cent increments as we've done in the past. And then we will get together to, to council you, to figure out how we can improve with the automated system throughout the city of Sheldon.
We need to vote on that.
Yes. Still comments are coming. Mike, are you about to share? Just wondering, I saw you getting the microphone ready. May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel.
Hi.
Yells.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Funker.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone, and let's keep moving along, shall we? Number seven on our agenda, another discussion about fireworks within the city limits. As you are aware, Governor Branstad has signed off, thank you, gentlemen, here we are, on the allowable sale of fireworks, and I don't have the dates before me, June, do we have that right here?
Yeah, yep. So the dates that you can actually set them off are right, right here.
Thank you. State law now allows use of consumer fireworks from June 1 through July 8, and again from December 10 through January 3. Any change in ordinance will require three readings if we decide to change this. Our thoughts last time that we were together, we were missing Pete and Randy. The discussion that we had that came to the table was, do we want to echo and be the same as the state? We felt, some of us felt it would cause less confusion. Fireworks are going off at that time of the year, around July 4 anyway. We enjoy the celebrations that happen in our town and try to encourage family celebration while using caution, but now is our opportunity to decide what it is we want to do within the city of Sheldon. And today, there's no TV. Where's the TV people? This is when we're going to take action. I'm teasing. So thoughts, comments, anything further from our previous conversation at our last council meeting? We heard from the fire chief, they were not opposed to it. Lyle, you shared your written with us, but I did not share all of that, but if you would like to come up and share with us now that you are here, I would appreciate your input also.
I guess, you know, a couple of comments that I would make. One is that's a really big window, from June 1 to July 8. It's 38 days fireworks going off. So I, you know, what I would anticipate, if the council chooses to make this legal in Sheldon, there'll be a lot more people shooting off fireworks than did before. Granted, there were people that did them anyway, but if they're legal, I suspect that the number of complaints that we'll get will go way up, and then that's 38 days.
My question is, I mean, they can, they can sell them now. Right, we can sell them. So is there something where we can, and I don't know if this is doable or if it makes sense, but those may be the sale dates, but the actual dates to celebrate would be like...
That was going to be, I think there's a difference in dates. I think that there's...
Sell the date?
That larger time period is when you can sell them, and then I think it's condensed quite considerably as to when you can shoot them off.
Well, I was just, I guess the, and maybe I don't have the right thing, but I was looking under Senate File 489 on page nine of that, and it said, "A person shall not use or explode consumer fireworks on days other than June 1 through July 8 and December 10 through January 3."
Here's a copy of it.
To me, that says I can shoot them off.
Right.
Yeah. I would understand it. Any different, Micah?
I agree with that.
Yes, here's a copy of it, Sean. Thank you, Sean.
I must have read it from another town.
Yeah, somebody else. They're trying to confuse us.
It's all over.
So, yeah, all right, council. What are your...
That's, the chief is correct in that even if you allow, you can further restrict the time period.
Yeah.
It's my reading of the legislation.
So I can see that too. Okay, you can buy them, but don't light them off. So it's like, what are they, how many calls have you gotten in the past when they weren't?
I didn't, when I sent the email out and I copied the calls for service, I didn't commit that number to memory, so I can't honestly tell you what that was, but...
I have it back in my email.
We had one last night.
Yeah, I heard it too.
And it was an individual who said, "Well, they're legal now." That was her explanation, that, oh, we can, we can do that now.
No.
So I think there's going to be great confusion with this law. I know it's been talked about in our Police Chiefs Association. I'm hearing towns that are saying, "No, we're not going there." Other towns that are saying that we, "Yeah, we're going to do it." And, and I guess, I never like legislation when there's confusion with people. I, I think this opens the door for a great deal of confusion. So what's allowable in Sheldon and what's allowable in Boyden, or Ashton, or elsewhere could be something completely different.
And I do think in the beginning, because this is new to our state, I do think we're going to get a lot of that in the beginning. Hey, it's, we can do it now. People are going to light them off. I think there's going to have to be a lot of education, you know, educating our public what the law is, whatever we deem it to be within our city. But I can see that, too, where, let's say we do get some of these peddlers coming in that decide to set up shop and sell between these dates, then how do you determine, you know, that's, it's crazy. So, you know, do we just follow suit with the state? Or do we follow suit with the sale, but then we are only allowing, it's only permissible to light them off at certain, you know, the certain days, July one through the eighth? I don't know. Greg, I know that, that you were heavy on the, the safety issue, too, a bit last time we were together, and time to think about that, but. Randy, do you have thoughts? You're stepping up to the mic there.
Oh, I was just laying it out, but I, I, you know, when O'Brien County or Sioux County Sheriff issues a no-ban warning, and if that's in the time of fireworks, how are you going to handle that?
Right.
You know? I, I.
Yeah, when there's a no-burning.
If we have a drought here and we're going to allow fireworks to shoot off, I got a wood shake, you know, my wood shake shingles can easily start on fire.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, how are we going to handle that?
Same with the no burn, no fireworks.
Well, a ban is a ban.
Yeah.
Period.
Yep. But that was a good point that you brought up, too, and I appreciate that, but that's something that comes to the table to talk here, too, but.
And I also think, I mean, if, if we allow them to shoot it off in, during these dates, which I have no problem with, I don't think we should turn our head anymore and say, "Yeah, it's Fourth of July, and it's passed." I mean, I think we need to track down on it, then, I mean, you give them a foot and they take a mile. Ain't going to work.
I'd agree with that. I think once you enforce it, I think after you issue a couple tickets, I think people will learn.
Yep. I think if we do do it, the sale dates are fine, but we should shrink the window.
I think that's what I was just going to ask.
Of being able to shoot them off. I mean, a whole month or more than a month, that's quite a lot.
The other thing that the state does not have, and I just double-checked with Sean, is these are the dates you can sell them. Now, in the past, I think you were like, "Have fun, but come ten, eleven o'clock," I can't remember what you had said, "Then no more." And I think that's something else we need to consider, even though these may be the days that they're allowable to be purchased. If we were to allow them to be set off, then I do think there needs to be a cutoff time so that come eleven, midnight, whatever, we decide that may be, that's it. Anything after, then we are stern with our follow-up. So something else to think about. So first, as far as the permission to sell between June first and July eighth, and again, December, uh, third.
To use, yep.
December ten through January three. And this is to use, but also to, that's when they are for sale as well?
Yes.
The window for sale is not more than this, correct?
Correct, and that's, and that's broken down between temporary structures and permanent structures. But it, the uses for the entire length of, of the allowable sale time, just to avoid confusion.
Right. I don't think we'll have to worry too much about December, but then again, you never know. So first of all, thoughts on the following the laws regarding?
I've been kind of thinking about it for, since the last meeting. I think that is a big window. I would think two weeks before, through the, like, the fifth of July, and go to, like, eleven o'clock, and if it's eleven oh five, you're in violation. And that's kind of what I've been, really thinking.
That window would be June twenty through July five, even though they're for sale through July eight. Just putting it out there. So two weeks before, that would be the allowable permissible time to actually shoot them off on these days are allowable of celebration, and the timeframe up until eleven P.M.
Then I think we need to make the fine.
Hefty.
That will bite them in the pocket.
Okay. Other suggestions, comments, ideas?
I would like to share one comment. Last meeting, I asked for input from the community. I got response from one, an email, a text, excuse me, today, and it's food for thought. I noticed that one of the arguments for legalizing fireworks in the city is that they are already being fired off within city limits. People also speed, use drugs, steal, drive drunk, and assault their neighbors within city limits. I doubt that anyone would suggest we legalize those activities. Laws are intended to promote order within a community, and our elected officials should be looking out for the interests, peace and tranquility of citizens, not giving in to pressure from a few hoping for financial gain and a few moments of pleasure.
I've heard.
It's food for thought.
I had a couple of people for it. I haven't had nobody against it. I had one person said, "We had all the worry about and all the issues when we built the skate park at the park. We had all the safety issues, all about that. You can't control accidents." So, he said, "Go for the fireworks." Says, "No different than the skate park."
I had positive feedback with the inclusion of a timeframe during the day, stop them at midnight, is eleven midnight in between that timeframe.
I had four or five positive comments and one not for it at all.
Okay. Lyle, what are your thoughts, then, you know? Our, our job is really going to be to educate what is permissible in Sheldon, and I think the sales are going to happen. Now, this is what we are going to allow. You know, we really, you can put it out there, media, newspaper, we can blast it in the water bills, whichever, but it, there's still going to be some confusion there, so.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a choice on the sale of fireworks?
Only when it, when it comes to zoning, but as far as the sale, that is something that is allowed by, correct me if I'm.
So it's conceivable that you could sell fireworks in town but not shoot them off?
Oh, absolutely.
Is there going to be any regulation on the sale where they can be sold, like proximity to other buildings, businesses?
Gas stations?
Those are the questions that I have to ask the, the city council and what you want to see, but that's.
I thought that was maybe regulation coming from the state fire marshal.
Does a fire marshal control the distance?
State fire marshal, doesn't, won't that be in the application with them?
There's, there's a number of things that the state fire marshal does require, as far as storage, following certain fire code and so forth, but essentially, we, we can mandate through some zoning if you would so require. I guess one of the questions I have as far as selling fireworks, before we issue a, a peddler's or transient merchant license or permit, should we make it a requirement that they have to furnish a, a license to, to sell fireworks from the state fire marshal's office?
Yeah. Don't you think?
So I would, that's my recommendation at a minimum.
Right. That's, okay. I would think you would have to.
Now, they are also required to have a, a minimum of two million dollars in liability insurance. That's something that they have to provide to the state fire marshal's office, so as long as they provide a copy of that, or because they have to show that to get their license, do you not want to make that a requirement as well?
What's on the state fire marshal's application so far? We don't know, do we?
No, we haven't seen the, the application, just, just the direction from the legislatures to the state fire marshal's office in what they need to develop. So, it's, it's, it's new legislation. They have not had time to put it together. I don't know that the, the intent was to legalize, I don't know that the intent was to legalize by the Fourth of July of this year. So, it, it might be a, a not now, but a not never.
There has been rather extensive discussion among the Iowa Municipal Attorneys Association, and there's been a varied approach, including one jurisdiction putting a moratorium on the sale, notwithstanding the language of the legislation. And obviously, that hasn't been tested yet, but there's, there's different interpretations about what you can and cannot do.
I, I was just going to point out also regarding the hours of sales, and Micah, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but they talk about as far as when you may shoot them off, and, and they basically, the code states from nine a.m. till ten P.M., and then the only exception to that is they may shoot them off between nine a.m. and eleven P.M. on July four, and the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding and following July four. So anyway, there are some hours built into, into that, if, if that's something that interests you.
Thank you.
I think we need more clarification before we're going to be able to do anything on this.
Uh, does anyone echo Pete's thoughts on that?
I'm sure we're going to get some pressure to try and get this thing done by, so they can get in on this year's July fourth, but.
Right.
With all of the, I don't know that we're going to be able to do that.
You know, and if somebody is looking to sell them, well, they can still start the peddler's permit process. It just will all depend on what the state fire marshal's application is and, and what are the requirements we may have.
I'd like to start writing, working on the ordinance part of it to allow the use possibly, and then get that ball rolling. And then also, I would like to look at what can the fine be?
What can the, oh, okay, fine, thank you.
You know.
So you're looking to amend our ordinance to the suggestion that you made?
I'm just throwing out two weeks before, through the fifth of July.
Right.
Till eleven P.M. That's kind of where I've been teetering with.
As far as setting them off, correct? Yes.
Lyle, were those, what you just talked about, were those in reference to shooting off fireworks or selling fireworks? So where did that come from?
I just, I printed off Senate File four eighty-nine, which addressed that whole thing, and that's where, that's where I found that, it's.
Because that's even more restrictive than we're talking about, which I'm fine with, but.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to point out that they do have hours built into that.
Yeah.
What was the number again on that law?
Four eighty-nine?
Senate File four eighty-nine.
That would amend Iowa Code Section seven twenty-seven point two.
Seven twenty-seven.
I think actually, if you, if you just went home and Googled Senate File, Iowa Senate File four eighty-nine, you'd find.
I think that would help clarify some things.
Okay. And then also, you know, keep in mind that this is through an ordinance, and it goes through three readings, but you also have the power, council, to. What's the word on pass? Suspend, thank you, those readings.
We can suspend all three on this one?
You can, when we begin to change the ordinance, we bring the first reading forward, and I think we can suspend the second and third for approval.
Okay.
But again, remember, by having the three readings, it allows for our residents to provide feedback, but it also, depending on where we're at, can affect the calendar of when all this can begin within the state, and we're not ready yet.
What would we need in place today to get the ball rolling on the ordinance?
What do you want it to read?
Possibly, we could.
Do you have a copy of the ordinance that we can?
Before the Fourth of July.
Oh, right here. Thank you. Right now, our ordinance reads as follows, it's Chapter forty-one eleven. It is unlawful, fireworks permit. It is unlawful for any person to use or explode any fireworks as determined in Section seven two seven point two of the Code of Iowa. Provided the city may, upon application, writing, grant permit for the display of fireworks by a city agency, fair associations, amusements, parks, and other organizations or groups of individuals approached by city authorities. When such fireworks displayed, will be handled by a competent operator. No permit shall be granted hereunder unless the operator or sponsoring organization has filed with the city evidence of insurance in the following amounts. Personal injury, two hundred and fifty thousand per person, property damage, fifty thousand, total exposure, one million.
That's current, right?
That is our current ordinance. So, obviously, that would go away. If we want to follow the sale of what the state of Iowa is permitting, which is June one through July eight, and December ten through January third, is that something we want to follow?
Is the state of Iowa, when they passed this, that we can shoot fireworks, it's not, is there certain fireworks they can shoot?
Yes. This is roman candles, bottle rockets.
They're different classes.
Yes.
Different class.
Class and second class.
The villages, so that ordinance would have to stay in there.
Because the village would still have to get a permit.
Right.
Shoot their fireworks off because they're much bigger.
Well, I think that we need to look at that suggestion on the Senate File and, and go from there.
Right, so we don't have language yet, but that's something that, under the direction we can tell, give Sean.
I think your broadest possibility at this point is to say, allow the use of consumer fireworks consistent with seven.
Two seven point.
Two seven point two as amended. That would be the most allowable, but you can, per this legislation, restrict it further.
Okay. So that's where we can start, and then we have restrictions, such as only permissible to shoot them off between these dates and these timeframes. Yes?
So we can change, we can change our initial motion, what Mike would say at the first reading, to say, "You can only shoot it off here and there."
Remember, when you're amending an ordinance, and if you make a substantive change, it after a reading, there's a possibility that you have to start the process over.
I think if you're making changes such as a couple of words, but not a full, you know, you know what I'm saying, then, yeah, we'd have to start over. So right now, would we consider following, allowing the use to be? Ready? Are we ready to say that we're allowing the use to be consistent with the use of fireworks? Allow, allowing use, consistent with Iowa Code seven two seven point two? Are we at any point ready to make changes to our ordinance?
Use that, but then I would say, I would, I would say two weeks before and up to the fifth.
So that would be.
No later than.
Maybe we would just go with, like, the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth of June.
The twentieth would be two weeks before.
So, June twenty to July five.
Now, I have a question.
Yes, please.
What about, because they're also, can be sold from December ten through January eight, or thirty?
I think we should limit it then, too.
I mean, so, are you, I mean, I keep hearing about the July date.
Something, two weeks before New Year's and day after.
Yep. The weather in northwest Iowa somewhat limits how much fire fired off anyway, I think, but.
One would think, you never know.
Do you have those dates that you recommend for winter? Did you write those down?
Two weeks before.
So July fourth would be like July, or June twenty to July five? And, and then, council, what did you just say about the winter dates?
The same thing, so two weeks before, whatever date that would be.
The same window.
Before first of the year. Yes, and then a day after.
Yep.
New, new year, so, New Year's, so, or, or do you want the second?
Let's go up until the second.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it would be December seventeen would be two weeks before New Year's Eve.
And leave the times in that, what the code said, ten P.M.
And this is something we can begin to work up, so, what was the timeframe?
The code times are actually later for the winter.
They are?
Celebration.
Are they?
Yeah, twelve thirty.
Good night. Happy New Year's.
No.
Yeah, that's right.
Nine a.m. on December thirty-one and twelve thirty a.m. on the immediately following day. So just on New Year's Eve.
Right. What's the, June twenty through July five, what is the timeframe you're thinking about the window during the day?
Well, they said, and the state law is ten P.M.
Was it ten?
And then eleven P.M.
Except for the weekends and the actual fourth, right?
Yep.
Ten P.M. Six o'clock, except weekends and the actual fourth, would be eleven P.M.?
Yes.
Thank you. And then echo the same as far as winter, ten P.M., with the exception of New Year's Eve until twelve thirty a.m.
I'm okay with that. It's fine.
We'll begin that change to present to you.
I'm okay with that.
Do you have all that information?
Probably make a copy of this right now.
I'll give you that, so I don't lose it. Okay. Any further comments? Otherwise, we're going to keep moving on. That'll be the beginning. going to keep moving on. That'll be the beginning. Yes, Sean?
Sales. So I would need some direction. At a minimum, I, I should be able to require that they provide a copy of the state fire marshal license.
Yes, absolutely.
And then as far as approving temporary use, there's somebody interested in setting up temporary buildings. As long as I follow the current zoning, we're not making it any more restrictive. It, we're just following, if, 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 if the sale of retail items is performed in that area, you'll allow retail fireworks to be sold in that area, correct?
Yep.
Commercial.
And it's complying with the fire marshal.
Yeah, that's the way you said first, the state fire marshal.
Yeah, a, a license would have to be, a copy of their license provided, so.
Okay. All right, so they can begin that. Thank you very much. Yep?
Just one other point of clarification. If I understood the law correctly, you have to be 18 years old to purchase them. But I don't believe you have to be 18 to shoot them off. Would that be correct, Micah?
I don't know the answer to that question.
It's the way, it's the way I understood that, just so that you're okay with that.
How old was the young man in Spencer that walked into the fireworks and lit his bottle rocket?
I think, I think it was a boy, I think, is what it was described to me.
What's he doing with fireworks? Age limit consideration? You have to be 18 to purchase? Do we echo that, too?
18 to purchase, I mean-
Is that in the code?
Is that in the code?
I, I, I think that would probably be, you have to sell to somebody that's-
So that would be, that would follow the 727.2. Okay. Thank you very much, Lyle.
So do we have any motion to get this going forward?
Nope. He'll start the paperwork and then he'll come to us.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll go through our readings. Number eight, and we still have a little ways to go. Consider the approval of the resolution directing the acceptance of a proposal to purchase $2.3 million, $2,395,000 general obligation capital loan note series 2017. Go ahead, you can, you can announce that.
Mr. Stevenson, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Scott Stevenson with DA Davidson here to address the council on the topic at hand and answer any questions you might have. So what you've got on your agenda is a resolution authorizing acceptance of an offer to purchase the bonds, which we sent this morning in the form of what's called a bond purchase agreement. And effectively, what that is, is a contract whereby we agree to all the terms of your financing. So it sets your interest rates, the amortization schedule, et cetera, all the, all the terms of your bond issue or loan, if you want to call it that. So, want to give you just a quick overview of what that looks like. The issue amount was $2,395,000 to finance effectively $700,000 for the wastewater treatment plant engineering costs, another $120,000 for 16th Street reconstruction engineering costs, and $532,000 applied to the Crossroads Industrial Park Extension. Additionally, there's $1,020,000 to be applied to refinance the 2011B bonds outstanding for interest cost savings purposes. So, the bond issue then amortizes through 2025, so it's about an eight-year amortization schedule. The interest rate, on average, worked out to 2.08%. That is effective inclusive of our fees. Outside of that, that's kind of the general overview. Through the process, we went back to standard and pores and had the rating of the city affirmed at A+ again, so that was a positive indicator. We went through that process last year with the events center financing, went through it again and got the same outcome, which for a town your size should be very happy with an A+ rating. Outside of that, what questions do you folks have?
What was the rate on that last bond that we had?
A+. Same.
No, the interest rate.
Oh. You know, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, that deal amortized over 15 years as opposed to eight years on this, and it also was, the interest to investors was taxable, so subject to income tax on their individual tax returns, whereas this is tax exempt. So it's substantially different.
Okay.
Oh, yes, it was close to three, if I had to guess off the top of my head, and this is close to two.
Thank you. Any questions?
Make the motion to approve that consideration.
Support.
Last request. Then, do we have a roll call, please? I'm sorry.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Bunker.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I don't know if we'll have questions on the next one, but it's in consideration to the approval of resolution authorizing the redemption of the outstanding general obligation capital loan note series 2011B dated January 31, 2011. Do you have questions or comments about that? Do you need further explanation? Seems like we've been going over this a long time over these, huh? Every time we think it's done, there's more. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. No further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Bunker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time.
Did you have any other questions on any of the other, just general topic? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks for hanging out and for the last hour or so. Thanks for interesting conversation. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Number 10, we have a pay estimate, number 10, on the Crossroads Pavilion before you. One moment, I will get there. Thank you, Ann. An amount of $485,453.76. I have not been in the building in a little while, but I can see quite a difference just driving by on my way to McDonald's or whatever. It's looking great out there. Things are coming along good, Todd?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve pay estimate number 10?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, a roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Bunkers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Number 11, we are in consideration of the first reading of the water and sewer rate ordinance. Remember, this goes through three readings. Let me get to that page now. Did I just skip it one? You, you had comments, but that's later on, correct?
Correct.
Do you have any questions or comments regarding the first reading on our water sewer? There we go. Rates ordinance. We went over this at budget time, if you recall, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
That was 3% raise, increase?
Eight.
Eight percent, that's right.
If there's no comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Last request for your comments, questions, feedback?
That wasn't the cost, basis for cost. That was, sheet that was sent out was just for information?
Information, correct.
Okay.
Any other comments, Ann? Thank you, Brad, for bringing that up. All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Bunker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. And then last on our agenda, at 6:11 in the afternoon, evening, comments. Any comments, council, to my right?
Have you challenged the school for softball tournament?
No, I haven't. And I wanted to know if you were thinking about doing that, because you lined that up last year.
Yep.
And who is your contact? Was it Mr. Spears?
Yes.
Would you like to reach out to him? Because I would sure like to wear my softball t-shirt.
I'd more like to just kind of throw down the gauntlet.
Let's do it.
Throw down the glove, shall they say?
There's no media here to pick it up. I'm ready for a challenge. Let's do this again.
Reaching out sounds way too kind. We got a grudge match.
We're challenging. We want the trophy back. There was a trophy, right?
And you'll be there, right?
With umpires.
Yes!
You're the softball star.
Would you play softball with us?
Yes.
Thank you. There. So I think that we'll have to see if the challenge has been accepted. My only request is please not June 4 through 8. I'll be consumed with the VBS.
Do we have any new hires that would be helpful?
Yeah, I don't know.
Keep that in mind.
Yes.
Affiliated with the city, whether you're on-
Bring it on.
Volunteer department or-
We'll go to bed and catch you. Comments, Todd, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, just two quick ones. I'm sure you noticed there's been people running around TP'ing our streets. They're just about done.
I'm like, what?
Yeah.
I got you.
We, we did receive a phone call that, that somebody's child had reported to their parent that they should really turn in whoever is super gluing toilet paper to the streets. It was a joke when they called, but I did get a kick out of that. But on a serious note, we were able to save back a fair amount of money on asphalt overlay this year, so just about 73,000 feet of crack ceiling is going to get completed this year. So that makes me very happy, because that helps us get caught up on that end. And then, just, just so you know, two years ago, I'm sure you're aware, we re-coated the interior of the water tower.
Yeah.
We did the inspection on that with an ROV last fall. There were what appeared to be a few minor failures in the coating, so the contractor is coming back to make those repairs under warranty. Those repairs are expected to start tomorrow. So as of about 2:00 this afternoon, we took the water tower out of service, and we are operating the city on pump pressure, which is slightly challenging for us, but hopefully things go without a hitch and nobody will ever know the difference, so.
And there's pressure reliefs around town on fire hydrants that-
There are. There's four of them spread out throughout the community. So, yeah, if you see an attachment on a fire hydrant and it's squirting a little water-
Yeah, I saw that.
Don't be alarmed. It's, it's, it's supposed to be, that's what it's there for. It's either that or blow up the plumbing in your home or the water main itself. And we don't want that.
Thank you for that. Any other comments, council? Okay, Sean, you have, I have something too. Sean, what do you have?
Yes, a TIP application has been received and will be placed on the next regularly scheduled council meeting agenda.
Thank you. Anything else?
As we are trying to wrap up our sewer rate study, one of the questions from the project engineer is if the city council would be interested in seeing a sewer rate increase over maybe three lifts. So potentially an increase in, in, in July, August of this year, possibly in, in January or a little bit later into next year, and then depending on if you wanted to go with three lifts, potentially January of, of the following year. So we're still working on the, the increments as far as the time in between the lifts, but one benefit of, of doing so is if, if we're planning on doing a rate increase over three, three increments, that last increment can be refined potentially, because the project would be ongoing at that point in time. We would know where our contingency would, would be if we're biting into that or not. So we're not necessarily increasing rates, taking that contingency amount in, in, in putting that in the rate structure. We would have to do that if we were doing it in one rate increase or in two, but we might be able to refine that last or third increment as the project is underway. So that's something that the project engineer would, would need to know. We could potentially run it over two, so you can see what that would be, but you have a little more assurance that, that target is, or rate is set properly if you did it over three.
I think that makes good sense.
My only concern is reaction from the public. It's kind of like the Band-Aid. You peel it off a little slower, or just rip that sucker off.
Mm-hmm.
You'll be tarred, tarred and feathered up three times.
I think they're going to scream either way.
Yep.
I guess the thing is, is if we're going to try and do it at one, it'd be a, it'd
be a guesstimate. And I like the idea that you can refine it when you get to the, you know?
Sure. Now, we, we might say that it, it's going to be a 20, 20, 20, but when it comes time to actually implementing that, that third increase, it could be, it could be lower. It could potentially be increased.
Plus or minus.
Yeah. Big determining factor would be what's the bid come in at?
Yeah.
What does the bid come in at? We're using a very random number of 11.4 based on very preliminary projections.
So would we have to make that decision before we approve the ba, or the bids?
Oh, yeah. You, you're going to need to start bringing in revenue now, or relatively soon. So it depends, again, on, on, on how much, we're basing it on, on the engineer's opinion of cost, but that, the benefit of, of doing it over three increments is now you, you're, you're basing it on how the construction is, the ongoing construction at that point. So they'll, they'll have a better indication of how things are working out. They'll also be able to, at that point in time, see what other costs in other projects, how, how they were bid out and, and the, and the costs coming in. So it just gives you that, that ability to, to-
Just so there's adequate cash flow.
Well, yeah. No, so again, you're, you're going to, you, you might come out with a 20, 20, 20, but that third rate increase might be a little more, or hopefully less, because you're going to start out, you, you always want to start out high and come in low. It's a lot easier than if you're saying it's going to be 20, and then you find out it's going to be 25.
The, the only danger would be that you got to educate people to say, yes, we're raising rates now, but stay tuned, this won't be the last one, you know? Or you're going to get that, wait a minute, you just raised them, what are you doing now, you know? So that's going to take some education, no matter what we do.
But this is information the engineer is going to have to plug in, so.
Year one in direction today.
Correct.
Well, I assume that whoever's doing this rate study would do it either way.
We could, we could do it over two and three, if you'd like. I guess if you're not interested in, in doing it over three, I won't have them go through the exercise, so.
I think it's worth looking at.
Yes. Okay. All right.
When you say 20, 20, 20, that's bucks, percent?
Percent. It's, we're just put, we just put it out there.
Just a number.
Right, right now, you're, you're, you're considering, just so there's better direction to, to staff. Right now, the, the engineer's rate study is based on 50% of the debt being covered by TIP. The initial, the initial projection is, with TIP paying 50%, you're, you're looking at roughly a 78% increase. That's what TIP paying, and, and again, it's preliminary. So you're looking at, again, TIP covering 50% plus another 78% increase. If TIP is not paying 50%, that 78% is even higher.
Well, I understand, but I also think that the utility ought to pay its way.
Well, yeah. So I, but again, in order to come up with these studies, I'm going to have to provide direction to the engineer.
I assume he's doing a study without that, too. No?
It's, it's easy enough, it's, it's easy enough to, to plug in figures, because the, the direction was at, earlier, 50% TIP.
No. We, we talked about, we talked-
Those, those were the premises, but he can, he can do-
We talked about doing this initial fee, the engineering cost.
Engineering.
We didn't talk anything further than that, that I'm aware of, that I remember.
Because without the TIP funding, now you're talking-
You're talking one hundred percent.
Well, I understand, but the, the, it's a difference in philosophy. It's whether you-
I thought it was up for discussion at a later time.
Well, it is. I mean, nothing's locked in, but we needed to-
So why, why aren't they exploring both avenues, would be my question. I think they should be.
Absolutely.
So strictly- So strictly revenue bond is, is, is the option? Is it 25% TIP?
What, what percentage have we already done?
I'd have to see what the 700,000 would, would, would be, but.
Why wouldn't we use TIP?
Why would we?
One thing that we have to keep-
You can ask that question either way.
Hold on, one second.
Yeah, but I asked first.
Hold on.
Because, because in theory, the utility ought to cover its own way.
And Greg, everybody, this is not an agenda item, this is under comments. So we have to use a little bit of caution about what we are discussing and deciding upon.
Can we make it a discussion item?
If we are going to make a decision, then we need to have this on the council agenda. Okay? Looking for direction, but if we're going to take action on something, we may be very careful about. This isn't an agenda item, it's only a comment.
So I guess under the comments, I, I know that we need to put it on the, the next agenda.
Okay, it'll be on the next agenda.
As an agenda item.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, any other comments? I have a couple. Ah, I said I had a few, so you just wait a minute. Todd, thank you again to your crew for the fast cleanup with that storm that swept through the other night, morning. Holy Toledo's, if you weren't awake for that, you're lucky. Great job. And then also, I wanted to make you, counsel, aware, not too long ago, at one of our past council meetings, we had Jake here from Park and Rec, and we had discussed pool hours. The Park and Rec Board had met and came up with a recommendation of having hours of 1:30 to 8:00 Monday through Saturday and leaving Sunday hours as is 1:00 to 5:00. We had recommended 1:00 to 9:00 with an hour of closing down from 5:00 to 6:00. Park and Board does not meet again until after the pool would be open. I wanted to make you aware of what they came back with. My only thought is we need to be open earlier. I'm not, I don't accept 1:30, I think that's too late for our outdoor aquatic center to be open.
I had heard some additional comments on that, about the shutting down for an hour and maybe not being smart, whatever. That being said, I think 8:00 would be fine, but I agree with you, thinking 1:00 should happen instead of-
We had recommended, yeah, the 1:00 to 9:00, 8:00 is okay, but not what I want.
Their biggest thing was from the time they get done with swimming lessons to the time they have to be back at the pool.
Still an hour, right?
About 45 minutes, because they gotta be there 15 minutes before they open the pool to get the pool ready. So that's where some of the big discussion came at, at the meeting yesterday, of leaving it at 1:30. Because they get nobody to sign up for the early morning swimming lessons, everybody wants the late swimming lessons. So that's where they run into a staffing issue. Not every day, but a lot of the days, they have that staffing issue. It's hurry up, get done with swimming lessons, and then we gotta be there to open the pool.
So how much time do they actually have? Because I thought swimming lessons ended at like 11:45.
So food for thought, that's what they came back to us, that's what they would like to recommend. Obviously. I'm not okay with 1:30, that's why people leave town and go elsewhere to swim, because it's too late. But if that's what they recommend and that's what they have to staff for, I guess that's something they have to do.
Put it on discussion for next time.
Exactly. So they'll come back again also. And I think that's it. Unless you guys want to hang out and make it a two-hour meeting? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's your second roll call.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Heels.
Aye.
Sawyer.
If you were adjourned, this is basically-